Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning, and thank you. So, good morning, and welcome to this formal meeting of the Children's and Culture Scrutiny Committee. My name is Brenda, councillor Brenda Colley, and I'm chairing the committee this morning. On my right here is Vice Chair Stuart Grantham, councillor, and we have from Democrats, our Services Officers Jess Wossey Yates, welcome. And also present in the chamber, council chamber, is our scrutiny officer, Tracey Johnson. I would like to begin with a health and safety announcement. There are no fire drills expected this morning or planned, so but in the event of a fire, the alarm going off, please exit the those doors at the back there. I want to say that way back, but it's that way out into the car park where you'll be further instructed as to what needs to be done. Thank you. This morning has been streamed live via the county council's website, and all your comments will remain accessible online after the meeting and can be reported by the media. With this in mind, I would like to welcome members of the public and press watching our meeting today. Can I remind everyone to ensure their mobiles, laptops and tablets are all on silent, please, during the duration of this meeting? The hearing loop is now activated. Request to speak will be collated by the Vice Chair. If you wish to speak, can you please raise your hand and we'll make a note? Thank you. And when invited to speak, you should press the button on your microphone unit to make it live, and please speak directly into your microphone so that we can all hear nice and clearly, please. And when you have finished, can you please switch your microphone off? So we will now move on to the formal agenda. So apologies for absence and replacements. Jess, do we have any apologies, please?
Thank you, Chairman, yes. So we have councillor Wright replacing councillor Rowe, councillor Whitaker replacing councillor Brooks, and we also have Paul Lock in attendance for councillor Natalie Oliver, the executive councillor for children's services, and I'd also like to note apologies from Heather Sandy, the executive director of children's services. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess, thank you. Declaration of councillors' interests. Members of the committee are reminded that they only need to declare any relevant interests which have not been declared in the declaration of pecuniary interests form. If you become aware of any interests at any point during the meeting, you can declare it then. Any interest declared will be recorded in the minutes. Do any members wish to declare an interest at all, please? No? Okay, we're all happy with that. So item three, minutes of the previous meeting of the Children and Cultural Scrutiny Committee held on the 5th of September 2025. This item is to approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting of the Children's and Culture Scrutiny Committee held on the 5th of September 2025 as a correct record. The minutes can be found on pages five to 10 of the agenda pack. Do I have a proposer? Thank you. And do I have a second? Thank you. We will now vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. And all those against? Any abstentions? Thank you, thank you for that. Thank you, those minutes are agreed as a correct record. Thank you very much. Announcements by the chairman, the executive councillor and lead officers. I was really delighted this week, just a few days ago, to attend the official opening of the mini new mini Premier Inn that's opened in the Mary Knox Building on Smith Street. This exciting, I'll read this because it'd be more informed and better than what I'm going to put in words, I think. This exciting partnership between Whitbread and Lincolnshire County Council is designed to help young people with learning disabilities gain hands-on training, build confidence and move into paid employment. In the new mini hotel, learners will gain first-hand experience of the hospitality sector while also developing independent living skills. The facility will be used by local special schools, colleges and adult services, ensuring that young people across Lincolnshire can benefit. This represents a significant step in creating a brighter future for our young people, and I wish them all the best, I really do. It was a super place. I went for a pre-opening and had a look around. It was really wonderful on the day, and the joy it brings to the students there, 16 years, sometimes can be up to 25, and it's so important for them. It gives them this confidence in themselves, you know, there is a place for everybody in this world. It gives them the confidence they're employed at the end of it, hopefully. And the young lad that showed us around, can't remember his name, he was so excited that he knows how to make a bed properly. He goes home and makes his own bed like this now, loves vacuuming as well. But yeah, it's a really wonderful project that they're doing there. They're really looking for other supporters as well into this, other companies that will take this on board and employ wonderful youth that have difficulties in life and need the extra support. So it was really nice to go to. So moving on, are there any executive councillors' announcements from either councillor Paul Lock, Executive Support Councillor for Children's Services, on behalf of councillor Natalie Oliver? None? Okay, thank you, councillor. Finally, are there any announcements from any of the senior offices? No, thank you. Okay, okay, thank you very much. So item five, Young Carers Scrutiny Review Action Plan, First Monitoring Update. This item is on pages 11 to 145 of the agenda pack and sets out the first monitoring update of the action plan developed to implement the 12 recommendations from the Young Carers Scrutiny Review undertaken in the previous council term. So action required. The actions required by the committee are to, one, review and comment on the progress made on implementing the 12 recommendations from the Young Carers Review, and two, to receive the second monitoring update at its meeting on the 24th of April 2026. The report will be presented by Hannah Pendleton, Head of Service, Boston and South Holland locality. We also have Jo Kavanagh, Assistant Director, Early Help and Attendance for this item. So over to you, Hannah, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, councillors. You might recognise me from your induction session. I came to talk to you a little bit about young carers then, and if you can cast your minds back all the way then, you'll remember I said that there had been quite a significant piece of work around young carers, and my coming to talk to you at your induction was one of the recommendations. Just want to say thank you, I appreciate we provided you with a lot of reading for this one, so thank you very much for reading, I'm sure, all of it. But I will try to sum up. The report that you saw attached here was the culmination of many months of hard work looking into the experience of young carers post-COVID-19 pandemic, just really trying to forensically look into what the offer was from the local authority for these really special young people, which included, so it was a forensic deep dive into what we offer specifically. It was scrutinising what else is out there, what other local authorities offer and charities and things, and most importantly, spending time with some of the young people in their clubs, asking questions about their lives and what's important to them. And I think you will have hopefully gleaned through your reading that it was, that was the most impactful part, really getting to talk to these young people, understanding what some of those challenges are. And the plan that we developed, which I believe starts on page 69 of your pack and what you're here to consider and what I'm here to report on, you can see is the culmination of all of that work and is really rooted in how we de-stigmatise and how we support that early identification, early intervention for young carers to celebrate them and the really important role that they're very proud to do for their families, but also assure ourselves that there is no inappropriate caring happening for them and their families, and making sure that everyone, meaning not just the local authority, but health services, education services, everyone are intervening at the right time for those young people so that we know about what's going on and so that we can take that positive action. So I won't go through the plan point by point because I don't think that you probably want that from me today, but I hope that you will have seen there is a lot of progress happening in with regards to the plan. We have been doing, we have an entire comms plan built out that reaches all of the different sectors, so varying varying from developing assembly materials for schools to take in and to going and meeting with SAFA, which is military charity, and doing lunch and learn sessions with them. So it is very wide-ranging. We know that young carers are everywhere, and we also know that we want to do our best to identify the young carers who aren't currently identified. So it's, the plan that's been put together is with sort of both of those aims. And I'll take any questions now?
Thank you very much, Hannah. We do appreciate all the work you put into your reports, all of you. Thank you very much. We know it's hard work, we read them. Okay, we have some hands up. So councillor Clark, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the report. Got two quick questions after reading it, just for clarification. When an assessment is asked for, how long does it take from the, you know, for the whole process of the assessment take place? And is the carer involved in that assessment?
Thank you. So the assessment, it can range. The aim is for no more than about 35 days, and yes, the young care is the most important voice in that assessment. We need to, what we've, what you've hopefully learned through reading the paperwork is that every young carer's journey is different, every young carer's responsibility is different, so it's really, really important for us to understand what their experience is so that we can then understand the best way to help them.
Right, thank you. The second one is on page 36. Eighty-eight per cent of schools in Lincolnshire have a named young carer lead. Is that 80 per cent of schools controlled by Lincolnshire Council, or is that all schools, including free schools, academies, et cetera?
Very positively, it is all schools. And we do have a plan to target, we are actively, targeting might sound a little aggressive, but going out to see all the schools that don't and working with them to develop that, but that is, that's all schools in Lincolnshire.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hume, please.
Thank you. In appendix A, the report references difficulties in identifying and therefore providing support for young carers and families within certain minority groups and military, for example, military settings and people being educated at home. So what, what can you tell me about what is actually being done specifically to raise awareness and also to reach out to these people?
Thank you for your question. There are obviously two sectors of young carers that we need to focus on. With regards our electively home-educated children, we have worked really closely with our education colleagues. We know all 150 of them, and we are contacting each of them through the year to understand, again, making sure that that caring role is appropriate, that they are linked into what they need to be linked into. We're developing written materials as well that will be sent out with the, our education colleagues when there are new children who become electively home-educated, specifically about young caring, to make sure that we know about them early and that that is, that that's really joined up, and just sort of what they can expect. But it is a, a lot of outreach that we do with this, with that specific group of, of children. With regards our military families, as I mentioned briefly, we've produced written materials that have been shared with our SAFA colleagues. SAFA's the military charity. We've developed a lot of a really close working relationship with, with SAFA, who can, who will know about these families sometimes first, and how they can access further advice and support, completing those assessments if they're the right person to do that. And we have developed some lunch and learn sessions that we're doing specifically with our SAFA colleagues to make sure that we, again, identify these young people early, and we do know that they, they will, they might only be in Lincolnshire for a short time, so it's how we get to know them the best and how we advocate for them for whatever that next posting might be.
Thank you very much, thank you. It's so important that we don't forget our young helpers, carers. It's very important. Councillor Wright, please.
Thank you very much, and I did try to read it all. Two questions, actually. One, one's right on the start of page 69, and it mentions Integrated Care Board, and I just wondered if you thought there'd be enough support with integrated care now being regionalised after being set up so carefully along county lines previously, whether there would still be the right connections in and enough support that way? And the other one's a more general question, which I was trying to look for, with regards to mental health, then. We know, we are now, some of it's anecdotal, but some of it's coming through charities now about the effects of social isolation from COVID, especially on young people, and some of these young people will probably either would have been or gone on to be young carers. So as mental health issues can actually materialise much later, is there any sign posting on from any issues, especially as these people then go on to young adulthood?
I'm going to do my best. Integrated Care Boards. We have developed early links and we are regularly attending those. I think that we are more regularly attending our health and wellbeing boards as opposed to the Integrated Care Boards, but these are, these are meetings that we will attend periodically and regularly. I'm sorry, I don't know if that was the full crux of your question. Is that okay? Do you want to come in, Jo? Okay.
Yeah, it was just to say that I think Hannah was absolutely right. We are really clear that those links will continue, and, and it has focused on things like ensuring that our GPs are really clear about young carers and all of those universal services that will come into contact with families, and that's possibly around when they're diagnosing an adult, checking out have they got children and might there be young carer responsibilities? So, yeah, we are confident that even though there'll be those significant structural changes, that that work will continue, and young carers are everywhere, so in terms of the region, there will be the same opportunities to work collaboratively with other local authorities around that issue. Thanks, Hannah.
We are, with regards to our GPs, we are attending cluster meetings through the autumn. We're providing promotional materi-, excuse me, promotional materials for them to have available in their practices, meeting with practice managers, those sorts of, those sorts of things. With regards mental health, it is one of the, one of the things that we would look at as we're meeting these young carers, as we're undertaking these assessments. The purpose of the assessment is to understand what the unmet need is for the family as a whole, and in the event that we have some worries about that isolation, we have worries about a child's mental health, then we would look to involve others into the plan with that child to ensure that they have the best support and early support to address it while recognising the unique situation that these young, that these children are in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Robinson, please.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much for the in-depth report. I highlight the use of our county council website to house information for young carers. Would this be able to be a web app that young carers can put a link to on their phones, home screen, so it's more of a safe space for, for them to go to, like, like social media that is made specifically with a mobile, mobile phone in mind? And regarding social media, I think the best way to present information to them usually are influencers nowadays. If we can promote young carers who are confident behind the camera to provide tips to these young carers, it creates more engagement from young carers because they're receiving that information from someone like them, but with more experience, as I say, from different councils, so I think that's more important to, to put across.
Thank you. What we've, we're working with digital around updating our website and so that we can have videos helped develop by young people and just general written information about that. As far as a web app, that's not something that we're doing right now, but I'm happy to take that away and consider that in readiness for our, the next time you have to see me, which is fine. With regards the, the young people and hearing from the young carers themselves, we are developing a young carers council, and I am very happy to look at how we can take this to them specifically about how we can, how they might be able to have some of those conversations from afar or through video or whatever media we think is, is most appropriate. So if that's okay, I'll take that away with me and ask them. Is that all right? Wonderful, thank you.
That's the best thing to, to ask young people, you know, about what the issues are and to see what they want, yeah, absolutely.
That was a very good question, very good, good suggestion. Thank you. Councillor Hume, please.
I'll be brief because it was pretty much along those lines. I was just going to ask if there are any different things that you're doing to promote. I mean, you've talked a lot about the promotional materials, which is great, but anything new, anything different, innovative to try to reach more people?
So one of the things that, so in addition to promotional materials and updating the website, what we've done is we have developed a welcome pack.
Authorities. I think that's a great example of how to do a very thorough report for a scrutiny committee, thank you. Seems something that's so obvious and simple, is that not something that is routinely done?
To be honest, I don't know if that's regularly underdone, regularly undertaken, but this is fantastic timing because we're about to go meet with all the GPs. So we can take this to them to think about how they identify that there is a young carer involved with that, with a family. As you will have seen, there are some, some of our young carers will care for parents, some of them care for their siblings, some of them care for other members of the family. So we'll just have to think through what that looks like, but I think it's a really reasonable challenge to put forward to our GP colleagues about how we can make it easier for everybody. Yes?
I mean, just to come back on that, presumably that's something the ICB could champion for us.
Again, let's, we'll put that challenge to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Parkinson, please.
Thank you so much. I think unfortunately the reality for a number of these young carers is that at some point they will suffer a bereavement from the person that they're caring for. It's, it's something that I've seen. So is there a pathway for those young carers, if they were to lose the person they're caring for, that there's the mental health and the support in place from the council to help them on that journey afterwards?
In a word, yes. It is, and thank you for highlighting it. It is a sad fact for some of these young people, but yes, there is specific support for young people suffering bereavements. Thank you.
Thank you, then. Just another point, I know that the number of substance misuse is something that's quite low, but it's again something that, that I experienced, that it's very hard to identify sometimes a young person that maybe has a parent that has a substance issue, because they don't end up really acting as a carer. It's more a, they have to make sure they're looking after themselves from a very, very young age, and so it's really hard to put them in that category because they aren't caring, so to speak, but they are in a really vulnerable situation as a young person. So do they fall under the young carer section or do they fall somewhere else?
It will depend on the sort of situation. Some of them will be known to us for safeguarding reasons, and some of them will be known to us because perhaps we have an older sibling caring for a younger one in that sort of situation, so it really does come down to the individual child. But it is, it is one of the things that if the local authority become involved with the family for safeguarding reasons, the, whether there are young caring aspects is one of the things that we are working hard to identify because they both could be happening at the same time, if that makes sense.
Thank you very much. Councillor Grantham, please.
Yeah, thank you, Hannah. I think it's wonderful with what you've been doing, so can you pass on my regards to your team? It's really good to see what you're doing. Question is regarding the expansion of the Children's Services Champion model, are you able to outline specifically how the champion model works? For example, how named champions promote good practices and ensure young carers are identified and supported earlier? Thank you very much.
Thank you. So our champion model is, it comprises practitioners, so people on the early help, social care and others on the front line, working directly with these families as opposed to managers. And they attend meetings, they advocate for the young, the young carers they work for, they provide a lot of challenge to their colleagues and to others about the sort of situation that councillor identified earlier, saying, have we considered whether there's young caring aspects in some of these families, sorts of things. We look at, they help us to look at barriers, so for the young people who aren't accessing our provision, trying to unpick and understand why, and looking at how we can, can work better together for these young people. So we've, they've recently worked together, our champions have recently worked together to develop a tool to help us understand how young carers can be, can be understood better when neglect is a feature in their family's lives, and specifically for our colleagues who are undertaking safeguarding assessments. So they often attend the young carers groups, get to hear from them directly, and can advocate for them in that way. And then when we are looking to develop new tools to share with the partnership and wider, we take it to them first. So our assembly materials or PSH materials, those sorts of things that we talked about, we take it to them first for them to help challenge us and make sure that they are clear and appropriate. So they're, they're really a wonderful resource and it's, it's supporting, supporting a lot of our ambitions for these young people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any more questions, please? That was a really good question and answer session. Thank you very much, everyone. Good questions and very good answers, thank you. Okay, so that concludes the discussion of this item then. Suggested proposal. I propose that the committee has reviewed the first monitoring update of the Young Carers Scrutiny Review Action Plan and has been assured of the progress against the 12 recommendations from the Young Carers Review and that we receive a further update in April 2026. Thank you. Can you please raise your hands if you agree? Thank you, that's agreed. Thank you very much. I forgot to say earlier, we will be having a comfort break before item seven. So item six, childcare sufficiency in Lincolnshire 2025. This item is on pages 147 to 198 of the agenda pack and sets out the status of childcare sufficiencies, sufficiency across Lincolnshire in alignment with the statutory duty under section six of the Childcare Act 2006. The action required. To review and seek assurance on the content of the report regarding the childcare sufficiency assessment for 2025. Two, to support the plans to deliver the childcare development programme using local authority delivery funding and capital funding allocations. And three, to endorse the publication of Lincolnshire's Childcare Sufficiency Assessment Annual Report 2025 for the public as per the local authority's statutory duty. for the public as per the local authority's statutory duty. And this report will be presented by Nikki Myers, Head of Services, Early Years and Childcare Support, and Sam Waite, Sustainability and Counselor, Consultant, sorry. Over to you, Nikki and Sam. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I know you've had the opportunity to read the report and the appendices, so I shall just summarize the report for you. So this report sets out the current childcare sufficiency position within Lincolnshire and the findings of the online sufficiency surveys with Ofsted-registered childcare providers and parents. It provides recommendations to support the development of early years and childcare places in Lincolnshire to meet our statutory childcare sufficiency duties. The local authority must report annually to elected council members on how we are meeting our statutory childcare sufficiency duties to secure sufficient childcare and make this, this report available and accessible to parents. The Children and Young People's Scrutiny Committee is asked to acknowledge the content of this report. To report annually on the childcare sufficiency position, we complete a survey with childcare providers to determine the places being offered, places being taken by children and therefore the capacity within the market. This then provides us with a sufficiency, sufficiency position and identifies any gaps in areas for us to address. We completed a sufficiency survey to review the availability of childcare in Lincolnshire between February and March of this year. We have a high response rate with 99% of providers completing the survey. We also ran a parent survey parallel to this on the Let's Talk Lincolnshire platform, marketing it widely and receiving 1,090 responses. This helped to give us further insight into parents' needs. Notably, 82% of respondents said they had access to the childcare that they needed and 18, this is an 18% increase on last year. There was a large response from parents of primary aged children and we know there are some areas that require outer school developments. We are now developing the National Wraparound Programme, which has increased the availability of breakfast and after-school club places we have available across all primary schools in Lincolnshire. This programme will continue into 2026. The outcome of the annual childcare sufficiency survey demonstrated that Lincolnshire has a good level of sufficiency of early years places across the county. However, there are still some areas where we need to grow the places to meet the parental demand by the, given by the childcare reforms. So South Holland District remains an area with some insufficient numbers of places. However, we have had some success this year with some projects and we have an additional 65 places within this area. Staff recruitment concerns within the sector are being felt locally and nationally. The national campaign Do Something Big launched last year to encourage people to consider a career in childcare is being widely promoted and the Early Years and Childcare Support Team are continuing to work with parents to promote careers in childcare locally. Since September 25, we have implemented the final phase of the national childcare reforms, 30-hour funded places for eligible working parents of children, the term after they turn nine months until, until they reach school. In preparation for this, Lincolnshire has experienced significant growth in the childcare market to meet the growing demand for working parents. The rollout of the offer has been successful with an average of 96% take-up based on parents with valid codes. Our surveys have shown that this has not negatively impacted on the disadvantaged two-year-old accessing places. This has been maintained at 83% in the spring term of 2025, comparable to the usual take-up levels seen by this cohort of children. This is contrary to some of the concerns that have been published nationally around two-year-old vulnerable places. We have a capital childcare delivery plan which has been updated to ensure this is responsive to the needs of parents across the county and we are ensuring all capital investments are carefully considered. The service is working with existing childcare providers, schools and half-producers to develop places with match funding investment for the sector. This year, we have had seven successful bids to the Department for Education to establish school-based nurseries, delivering over £700,000 worth of investment in childcare in Lincolnshire and creating over 117 additional places. We have a good interest from schools for phase two and three of, of this programme and hope to have further investment in the coming years. Our service is monitoring the market closely, particularly for the changing demands of working parents and the employment market in response to the budget announcements. And we will continue to develop our plans to, to support this duty and ensure we can meet the needs of all families in Lincolnshire. So thank you and open up for any questions, please.
Thank you very much, Nikki. Thank you. So we have Counselor Whitaker, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your report, Nikki. It's, it's superb. On page 149, the report states that from September 25, eligible parents have access to 30 hours of funded childcare weekly. What constitutes an eligible parent and what provision is currently out there for the parents to, sorry, for the parents that are not deemed eligible?
Because it's really important to make sure those that aren't eligible through the working, the working element of it, that still have access. So to be eligible for 30 hours childcare, parents must be working and earn the national minimum wage. They must be working for at least 16 hours a week and the cap is they must not earn over £100,000. For families not eligible for the working entitlement, there is a two-year-old vulnerable children's offer. And we've also for some, for many years, had a three and four universal offer. And the three and four universal offer is 15 hours of childcare a week. And there is additional government support for childcare costs through tax-free childcare or universal credit. And we've got all this information publicised on our Best Start for Life website. And so parents can either ring in to Early Years and Childcare Support or look at that on, on the website. So we've got a really good offer and a really good take-up in Lincolnshire.
Thank you. That's really good to know. Thank you. Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report. On the survey carried out, the, how many parents were eligible for the survey? Because 39 doesn't seem very many. And are those 39 in one location or spread all over Lincolnshire? The other part of the question is, the parents that didn't seem happy was 39% that, that didn't meet the needs. What, what's happened to those 36%? Has there been any follow-up?
I shall let Sam answer this because she conducts the survey.
So we publicise our survey widely and it's, it's not actually, we don't go to specific parents. We ask parents to partake in the survey. So, you know, the 1,090 respondents are those people that decided, yes, they want to give their opinion on it. So it is a snapshot. We appreciate that. But we don't actually have parents that we, a bank of parents that we survey. We do encourage all our providers, so people who have that frontline contact with parents, to fill in the survey. And that's where we say, and we also advertise it within the children centres, the family hubs, all of those points in which parents access early year support, we encourage them to do the survey. So those 82% are happy are the ones that have sent back saying, yes, I've got all the childcare that I, that meets my needs for my family.
The surveys are anonymous from the parents. So we do encourage them to, if they have any concerns, to ring in to EYCCC and talk to us about that. So we can support them with any childcare needs that, that they have and the provision, the specific provision that they are looking for, should it not meet their requirements. But as we can see, Lincolnshire, it, it shows a really good picture across Lincolnshire that families are generally happy with the childcare. We've had huge expansions, particularly on baby places across Lincolnshire with the, with the government's reforms. So we've done really well. Schools and private sector providers and charities have all really supported us to grow these places.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Can you just put your mics off, both of you, please? Thank you very much. Thank you. So Counselor Robinson, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah. So thank you very much for the report. The, the report says the planned housing developments project 42,000 new homes across the county by 2031. What is the current estimated demand for early years places generated by the 7,300 already built homes? And how does this compare to the early years provision already secured through section 106 agreements for those developments? Thank you.
So the, the, the sector keeps, we keep abreast of all of the developments and we work with our partners and we look at what we need childcare and that's all factored in in our main capital build plan. So that's all factored into how many, what provision we would need for, for new growth and early years. And we work with businesses as well to have a look at all of that. So that's all factored in in our overall plans.
Thank you very much. Counselor Hume, please.
I noticed one of the themes in the document is helping to create high-quality, inclusive childcare environments, reflecting the diverse requirements of our families. I think that's brilliant. But I wondered if you could tell me what specifically is being done? I mean, we're aware of the promotional materials and things like that, but how specifically are, you know, what are the actual actions being taken to reach out and make it more inclusive and, and find those people that are hard to reach specifically?
We expect all of our provision to be inclusive because obviously children come with lots of different needs. We want to support children really early in childcare so that they, if there's any emerging particular send needs, that that is supported really early on so they're not going to school and, and not having been supported. We, we have Dingle's Promise that supports all of our providers and most of our providers have taken up that offer to support them on training and support for staff to identify children's needs through assessment in the early years. And they're all, and that is supported. The government's ambition is through, they have devised a Best Starting Life strategy, which says, which articulates 1.5 billion into childcare specifically targeting those children most vulnerable and those with send, the specific targets through family hubs through, for send children. And we have early year send advisers that are linked in with the family hubs. We want, what we want to do is make sure that children take up their childcare entitlements. So we're, we have that specific support to the settings, to the staff settings and we have a particular arm within EYCC that supports that good quality. But we're interested in those children that don't attend a, a setting. So we have, we look at the admissions data and we identify those children that, that aren't taking up their place. And those send, those specific early year send advisers will be targeting those children and those families to really handhold them and support them into a setting. We don't want children going to a, to a school at four years old that haven't attended a setting because we know they don't do as well. And they're not, they're at risk of not achieving a good level of development. So we want the best start for all of our children in Lincolnshire.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you. Counselor Corey, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for your paper. Going back to the point that Counselor Clark made on pages 150 to 151, specifically families across all age groups are struggling to access suitable childcare. So you've identified barriers. Can you tell us what impact your interventions are having on, on supporting those, those families to access the requisite care? And also, what impact do you anticipate this autumn's send white paper having on deliverability? Thank you.
Governments, the government has announced additional send funding for 26, 27 to support the childcare sector to make places more accessible. So again, we know what Lincolnshire's offer is, but we need to look for that. We introduced a new sending fund award to all wraparound places to ensure that all before and after-school clubs have access for children with send. We have an outreach programme and through our send effectiveness advisers, we will be contacting all families and children not accessing the places as I just sort of stipulated. I think the impact will be really profound on this because I think we need to really target those children that aren't able to access some of this support. We need to wait for the white paper, but I'm quite looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to what that brings to early years because I think the government is really focused on the best start in life and really focused on the early years and that'll impact and make a difference all the way up the chain right into school. We need to absolutely get it right in the early years. And so we do have announced continued funding for our family hubs and, and continued funding and further funding and additional support for our settings. So we need to look at what the white paper stipulates around specifically send. I don't know if that answers your question fully.
It, it does. Thank you. Thank you very much. And what will success look like for you on this?
I think particular success for me would look like children at the age of four aren't going into school without accessing a, a nursery, because I think that's, I think that's our aim to make sure they've got access to good child, good quality childcare. We do have good quality childcare across Lincolnshire. We haven't got any inadequate settings. Most of ours sit at good. So I think that's, for me, that's what that looks at. But families feeling supported. So the voice of the parents saying that they feel supported. And we have lots of good examples of that through our family hubs, where families feel that they have been supported, that they have emerging needs, particularly in speech and language, and they're being supported with that. So their interactions, children's interactions. And so I think, again, for parents to say to us that they feel that support and, and a need, and an emerging need of send doesn't go on to be having to have a, a child on an EHCP, to be honest. I think that's what Martin and my aim would be. So I think that's what success would look like, that we are picking up more children really, really early on and they're not emerging into a send need. Because it's missed experiences and missed opportunities sometimes with our children. And that's what we aim to do through our family hubs and our good quality settings across Lincolnshire.
Thank you very much. Again, good questions and thank you for your answers. Counselor Smith, please.
Thank you, Chairman. The, the report's great and it's covered a great deal of information, specifically around the school cover and nursery cover. But what happens in the 14 weeks that the children are off? Because two-year funding is only term time only. And if you're a working parent with a disabled child, then what, what cover is there for those 14 weeks that they're not in place? Thank you.
Two-year-old funding can be stretched as well. So it can be delivered in various ways. We pay it on a, on a 38-week basis or 37 and a half week basis. However, it can be stretched. So locally, when they go to a provider, they are able to stretch it. So that which case, a two-year-old, whether it is a disadvantaged two-year-old or whether it's a working two-year-old, can actually attend for 50, 51 weeks of the year is the most, 52 weeks of the year is actually the most they can attend. But that's very difficult to do. But so, yes, it can be stretched.
We also have a subsidised childcare budget and that covers children mainly on a plan. So if a child is a vulnerable child and they don't have access to any of these entitlements, then we, we would look at that through our, our fast and social care colleagues.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Counselor Parkinson, please.
Thank you so much. My question really comes around the section 106 funding because as the population grows, we build more properties, the ongoing demand for these services is going to be sustained moving forward indefinitely. But the section 106 payments are not sustained indefinitely. So at some point, we as a local authority are going to have to pick up the bill for that once we've exhausted all of the section 106 funding. Is that effectively the case and there's nothing that can be done about that?
You're right. At the moment, we, as within the section 106 guidance, we do have a place there. It does talk about early years and ensuring that there's sufficient early years places within any new development areas. So that's great. That was added about 18 months ago. You're right, with regards, there's only limited amount of 106 money that can be spread and it goes over various different areas as well, doesn't it? We do have capital funding that we got from, we received from the DFE to ensure that actually our childcare is developed appropriately with regards to demand. And we still have funding left and Nikki mentioned that in her report as well, that we will be using that wisely to ensure that any new developments are in line with our sufficiency needs across the county. At this, at this moment in time, we don't use council money to expand childcare places. It is actually money that we receive from the DFE or, as you say, through 106 money. So we look for those sources as a team. We always look for those alternative sources to fund any childcare needs that we have. But our report does say that our sufficiency is generally good. We do, it doesn't mean we don't have pockets of needs across the county. So we don't anticipate that need to utilise council money at all.
And we always, we always seek to maximise our, our capital money and we look for match funding wherever possible. possible. We really scrutinise what the provider coming in could offer. So we really try to maximise that capital money that we have.
Sure. I suppose the only concern from my side is when you look at the proposed rate of expansion that we have in the county, the amount of people that are becoming here, that are we going to be able to match the demand quickly enough? Because these housing estates can go up very, very quickly. They can build thousands of houses very quickly. If we have an influx of people into the county, the infrastructure's already struggling. There's already a lack of places for people. Are we going to be able to keep up with that demand if the continued rate moving forward?
I guess the highest demand we've seen so far is this year with the government reforms, really trying to extend for baby place. And we've managed to do that. We've had providers on board wanting to extend place and new providers coming in. So at the moment, we have matched what we need in the county. So we hope we can continue to do that and to continue to grow to meet the demands of families. Our assessment of sufficiency need is also very dynamic. So although we do a survey once a year, we continue to look at it and we look at very granular levels as well of sufficiency. So where a provider will say, Sam, that, you know, that we've got people knocking on the door, I can't provide them with places, we will then focus our efforts in that area and have a look. We'll look at alternatives, more cost-effective ways. For example, recruitment to childminders in our rural areas where actually it wouldn't warrant a whole new nursery. So we look at things like that within the sufficiency as well. So we are very mindful as well. We have our predicted builds and what actually is happening throughout the year as well and how that's impacting on communities and providers in that area.
Thank you. councillor Robinson, please.
Thank you. Yeah, just following on from my previous question and also following on from councillor Parkinson's point as well with regards to the 106 agreements. Could we, I realise you wouldn't maybe not have the data on you to answer the question properly, but could we just request that that's sort of sent to us, just that information, that more data set about the current housing and how that's sort of affected demand and what we've secured from the 106 agreement so far?
Yes, I can look at that information for you and get that circulated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Martin Smith would like to come in there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's just worth noting, obviously we're talking about section 106 in the context of early years and sufficiency, but section 106 is much broader than that. It's contributions towards broader education, highways, et cetera, and is actually overseen and managed within the growth directorate. So we're having a conversation on one element of it, but that whole section 106 topic is a much broader piece that we would need to work with our directorate colleagues to get the update and manage the information that can come from that. Because obviously some of it's quite sensitive in terms of decision-making, et cetera.
Thank you for that, Martin. Thank you. councillor Grantham.
Thank you, chair. Thanks, Nicky Smith, for it's really good to hear, good positives outcome. On page 171, the report highlights that take-up of offered childcare hours can vary and that not all parents opt to use the full entitlement. What are the barriers to more parents taking up childcare offers and how can we address this?
So we work with childcare sector to ensure that the hours being offered can be accessible for parents and to maximise the hours we take up currently. The majority are taken up, which is 97% of hours are being accessed at the moment. We have an early years audit process and business support offered. So we make sure that providers are focused on the way they offer their hours. For instance, if a family can't, if a family isn't a working family and they want a three- and four-year-old universal offer, those 15 hours should be accessible to be able to be accessed for that family that isn't working. So we work with the providers. We have the audits to make sure that we can't see any big loopholes or any children that wouldn't be able to access because those hours are either working or non-working or for the vulnerable two-year-olds. So we do that audit process. We do a business and obviously we support through the business case as well because we want all of our providers to offer accessible hours, but we want them to be sustainable businesses as well. And that's really important when we've grown the market for them businesses to be sustainable. So we look at both angles, really.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any more questions, please? Our councillor Parkinson.
Thank you. It's just around the schools-based nursery grant. I think it says seven schools have now been, had accepted and a few haven't. I presume as a local authority, we are trying to push as many schools as possible to apply for that grant to expand the amount of places that are available at any given time?
We would like, yeah, we do want our schools to apply for the grant. We want them in the areas where we have the need, though. So we don't want them to be, just to be across the county. So we're looking at the areas that have the need. So the Department for Education are working with the local authorities. Local authorities will look at where the need is. We have phase two and phase three announced for the school-based nurseries and our maintained nurseries are also able to apply for these now, which we have five across the county. So we're quite excited about developing and supporting and working with our education sector under Children's Service and with our schools. So we have quite a good programme that we're running there.
And the ones that weren't accepted for the grant, was there a particular reason they weren't accepted?
We didn't have the feedback for the reasons because there was, we asked the feedback from the Department for Education, they didn't give us the reasons. And so we will work, if there's a need in that area, we, our team work with the school to put in, or put in another application within phase two. Anyone in phase one that weren't accepted for whatever reason, DFE didn't provide feedback, as Nikki said, have been invited to apply for phase two. And depending on the position where the school is, they can be looking at phase three as well, which will be local authority-led as well. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any more questions, please? Okay. Thank you very much for the report. Thank you very much. I propose that the committee has been assured on the childcare sufficiency assessment for 2025 and supports the plans to deliver the childcare development programme using local authority delivery funding and capital funding allocations, and that we endorse the publication of the Lincolnshire's Childcare Sufficiency Assessment Annual Report 2025 for the public as per the local authority's statutory duty. Can I please, can you please raise your hands if you agree? Thank you very much. I think that, I think that's it, everyone. Thank you. Thank you for that. Right, we will now have a, just a quick comfort break for those who require a 10 minutes, say 10 past back here. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Item 7, Children's Services Annual Statutory Complaints Report 2024/25. This item is on pages 199 to 218 of the agenda pack and sets out the Children's Services Annual Statutory Complaints Report for 24/25. The report only addresses complaints relating to children's social care in line with the statutory requirements and does not contain any data relating to complaints about the wider children's services. So actions required. The actions required The actions required by the committee are to review and seek assurance on the annual complaints report for twenty twenty four twenty five. The report will be presented by Caroline Knight, Head of Services, Quality and Standards, and Principal Social Worker. Over to you Caroline, thank you.
Good morning. So as the Chairwoman's kindly said, I'm here to present the annual complaint report in respect of social care for the year April twenty twenty four to March twenty twenty five. Complaints made to Lincolnshire County Council are all managed through the Customer Relationships Team, which is based in the Resources Directorate. They produce the report and it comes to me as Head of Service to make sure I oversee the Children's Services complaints, pick up any learning or any themes that are arising from all these. You'll see from the report that there are three pathways within the statutory, so within the Children's Services complaints. There's the social care complaints procedures, school complaints procedures, and the, everything else goes into the corporate complaints procedure. So the report before you today is a, is a part of the complaints that is simply related to anything to do with social care. Within the social care procedure, there's three stages. Again, it's set out in the report, but there are, stage one is local resolution, where complaints are dealt with by the appropriate county council manager. Stage two is when an individual remains dissatisfied with the outcome of their complaint at stage one, they can request an independent investigation. And the final stage is stage three, whereby if they still remain dissatisfied, they can request independent panel to review how the complaint was handled. That will conclude the internal process in relation to complaints, but complainants then have the option to approach a local government ombudsman. So the regulations changed during two thousand and twenty four, and it saw the removal of the informal resolution step, which used to precede the formal three-stage process. So now, any complaint or any concern that any member of the public raises with anybody in children's services are automatically all put into the formal complaints procedure, and you'll see a bit later on why that becomes relevant. So in the year twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, the Customer Relations Team received a hundred and fifty seven contacts or complaints in relation to social care, and this makes up fourteen percent of all complaints across the whole of the council. This was a reduction on the previous year, which saw two hundred contacts, and we also need to set these numbers in the context of referrals to social care, which for the, this year that we're talking about, was eight thousand seven hundred and eighty six referrals were opened to the frontline social care teams, and that's an increase of ten point five percent on the previous year, which saw seven thousand nine hundred and fifty one referrals made to the same teams. You'll note from the report there was a significant increase in complaints in relation to children in care. A total of twenty six complaints were made, and that was in complete contrast to the previous year, where there were none. And the increase in this is primarily due to the removal of the informal escalation process I mentioned a few minutes ago. When that process was in place, if a complaint or a concern arose, there was the option to try and deal with the matter informally before it was put into the formal complaints procedure, and that really accounts for why there's been that increase of twenty six complaints in relation to children in care. Of the hundred and fifty seven complaints in total that were made, twenty six of these were completely upheld, thirty six were partially upheld, and ninety five were not upheld at all. Reasons for the complaints are detailed in the report. Of the twenty six that were upheld, fourteen of these were due to insufficient or lack of communication, but these fourteen were all dealt with at the stage one level. Thirty six complaints were partially upheld, and seventeen of these were due to communication concerns. And as you'll see from the report, level of communication is the main reason for all upheld or partially upheld complaints. So frontline staff are busy and there's increasing demand, and the children and families we work with rarely want social workers involved in their lives. They're often very vulnerable and experiencing significant challenges in their lives, and it's against this backdrop that social workers are often having to address serious concerns with them about their children. Children's Services staff work hard to raise awareness about the need to communicate well, and we've tried really hard in recent years to address this issue. The Customer Relations Team and the Complaints Manager attends the team managers' meeting every quarter to share details about complaints, thereby keeping the matter on their agendas and to also discuss actions that can be taken to address these causes. Team managers then take that information back to their teams and share with them. We've also implemented some new processes, and one of these is a revised initial visit checklist, which reminds workers to discuss expectations around communications, such as frequency of visits, whether these will be planned visits, unplanned visits, how many meetings there will be, frequency of those who might attend, whether they want contact via telephone calls, text messages, emails, WhatsApp, any other message, and who to contact in an emergency or if the worker is unavailable. So all complaints are viewed as learning opportunities and are addressed at the time with the worker concerned, and it is reassuring that numbers of complaints have reduced from last year despite the removal of the early resolution process and against the backdrop of increasing demand for services. So Chairman, that concludes my overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that. Again, we do appreciate the hard work that you put into all these reports for us, thank you. Do we have any questions, please?
As you mentioned, most of the complaints, the vast majority, fifty four percent, were related to a lack of communication or one or other miscommunication, misinformation, et cetera. I was actually rather impressed by how few genuine and or negative, reflecting negativity on to the service complaints there were. There were lots of, you know, reasonable complaints made. So can you tell me a little bit about what you're doing to improve communications and perhaps using an integrated approach involving parents and other carers in that process of communication, keeping people updated, et cetera?
As I've already mentioned, we, we've really tried to ensure the learning from all complaints is addressed on a very regular basis, and there's the quarter, so there's the bi-monthly team managers' meeting, but the Customer Relations Team attend quarterly to go through that quarter's complaints and make sure that all the themes are picked up and then the managers can go back and address them. I think one of the challenges is around expectations. So children and families that we work with have an allocated worker, it's often a very difficult time in their lives. You know, if they have a crisis or need to speak to one straight away, workers aren't always available to them, and that's why we're trying to sort of set out those expectations and be really clear at, at the start of the relationship between the worker and the parent and the child about how often we can expect communication, what's the best way to do it, and we do keep reiterating to workers about the need to respond in a timely manner. So we keep it on the agenda, but that doesn't mean to say we've got it resolved, it just remains ongoing work in progress, really. So we are trying. I don't know whether, Jo, there's anything more you want to add about that?
I don't really, I think, I think as Caroline said, it's, it's the contextual information around the, I guess we would be concerned if we didn't ever get any complaints. So although the complaints are low, we would expect from this cohort of children and families that there will be times that they're dissatisfied with our involvement, and I think as Caroline said, sometimes it's about expectations for, for children and families, the issue that they want to speak to their social worker about is really, really important. For that social worker, they may be out on a visit that's really important, they may be doing a joint investigation with the police, they will have all the priorities, and so sometimes it is about continually resetting those expectations. So there are some things that I think we will probably always get as a, as a theme around complaints, but the fact that there, there aren't more is, is really helpful, I think, and as Caroline says, we want to keep it as a live learning issue so that things are addressed as soon as they can be, and as Caroline's articulated really well, the ability to do that has become a bit more tricky. So we will still try and resolve things early, but they are still now recorded as a formal complaint in a way that they weren't before.
Have a follow-up, is that, if that's okay? Thank you very much. Just a comment there, it's, it's interesting, you know, complaints, we don't really want them, but we can grow from them, can't we? So that's good. Councillor Clark, please.
Thank you. Under the complaints procedure, stage one, it's forward to the appropriate manager. Stage two, you have a independent investigation. Who then receives that investigation and makes a decision?
Okay, so at stage two, we have some investigators that are actually commissioned and appointed by the council, so they are external people to the council, and they are appointed by the Customer Relations Team, they are forwarded all the information, they meet with all the people involved, so, you know, that could be the social worker, it could be I R O, the members of, of the team, anybody that's been involved and that is referred to in the complaint. That report, they then produce a report that goes to Head of Service, sometimes A D, it depends on the level of the complaint. We look at whether there's any themes, learnings, and we have to respond to that, and it's signed off by A Ds.
Thank you. Councillor Hearn, please.
Thank you for your explanation, and it is an excellent report. I fully recognise and understand the challenges involved when working with people who need social services and support, but I was wondering if you could be specific about what exactly you're doing to try to improve that communications process? I completely understand the challenges and having to remind people completely, but are you doing anything different to, to what we've done before?
I feel like I've already answered that to a certain degree. We are, we do, we have reviewed our inductions for all staff and our training, so, and when we rolled out the new initial checklist, we have sort of shared that with them, with workers, particularly new staff, because it's about making sure when we get new staff in as well, that they are clear about our expectations and our policies and procedures. I'm not sure, I'm looking at Jo because she's...
I think the thing that's new, Caroline, probably, is the, the formalising of the complaints at an early stage with the team managers, so the fact that you are having the complaint manager coming to the Children's Services Team Managers' meeting on a regular basis so that they can say, in this quarter, these are the complaints we've had, these are the themes, and, and then it's, it's very responsive, and I think then that makes the team managers realise this is an ongoing issue that we need to, because we're a big county, as you know, we've got, we employ a lot of social workers, we employ a lot of social work managers, and they will perhaps have been focused on the complaints that are in their team with their social workers. This allows an opportunity for everybody to learn from every complaint, if that makes sense, so I think that is the new thing. I don't think it necessarily means that we won't still have some complaints around miscommunication next year, because there are instances where, you know, individuals who are human beings, and as Caroline's articulated, are busy, and we don't always get it right, so there'll be some individual things that have been about an individual worker and an individual response that are addressed, and then what Caroline's doing in her role is pulling together the themes so we can employ that learning across the whole workforce.
Thank you very much. Councillor Smith, please.
Thank you, Chairman. My question's around the Regulation forty four visits, because a lot of it is done verbally. So is it then recorded, the complaints made by the child in the home? Because they might complain about the house manager or somebody, a member of staff, but how is that then taken forward? Is it recorded and, and sent back to the county council, or what, what is the procedure? It didn't really go into depth on the procedure of the forty fours.
Okay, so I'm not sure how much detail's in the report about Regulation forty four offices, but this is a statutory requirement that we have independent members of staff who actually do sit in my service area, who have a, to visit every children's home that is local authority run once a month, produce a report, and that report goes off to Ofsted. As part of the, the visit they do every month, they have to satisfy a number of standards that are set out in the regulations, and one of those, and there is an expectation, sorry, that they meet with children that live in that home, they talk to staff in the home, they read a lot of the records, so they may see children on a one-to-one basis, they may pick up from other staff members, or they also actually have to talk to parents and some of the other professionals who visit the home and are involved in that child's life. If a child particularly says they want to make a complaint, that can be recorded then and there by the Regulation forty four officer, depending on the child's age and abilities, the Reg forty four can link them up with an advocate who can advocate for them on their behalf. It really depends on the level of the complaint. If it's just an issue about, I don't like what food they give me or what I'm being offered for my tea tonight, then it can be resolved there and then. If it is a more specific complaint, then the Regulation forty four officer would come back and would put it through the complaints process and would send it to the team manager who has case responsibility for that child in that home, and also the home's manager, depending on what the complaint is, but they are picked up and they are dealt with, but we didn't actually, I don't think we had any specific ones last year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can I just ask you, how, how confidential is this for the, the children in care? Do they, you know, do they feel safe in going to a member of staff, or is there a special avenue they go down to, down through?
In, in relation to making complaints? It's a safe space when they want to talk and raise a complaint. It really depends on what the complaint is and as to how confidential it can be kept, because obviously if something needs to be acted upon, then other people need to know. So it's, it'll be on a case-by-case basis. It would be kept confidential in terms of only certain people would need to necessarily know to resolve that complaint, it wouldn't necessarily be put in detail into the, into a report like this to be shared in a public arena, it would just be kept within the child's immediate sphere of people that are involved and that need to know.
Thank you.
I was just going to add as well, but as Caroline said, for, for children in care, they have their own allocated social worker, but they also have lots of other opportunities to talk to people independent from their social worker, so there are lots of opportunities for them to raise concerns, whether it would be about their carer, their social worker, or if they've got any, they are provided with lots of opportunities to have conversations outside of, of those relationships, if that makes sense, through the independent reviewing officer, and through our participation staff, who are very much about getting the voice of children, and so there are lots of different opportunities for them to have a safe space if they've got any concerns, and I think it's real, it's a real credit that, that the numbers of, of official complaints are really low in that area.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that, thank you. Councillor Granton, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. I completely agree with you about the lack of communication when it comes to complaints, specifically around caseworkers, because to my understanding, caseworkers don't even have to do annual reviews or even show up to annual reviews regarding E C H Ps. So I'm just wondering, if that's the case, aren't we opening ourselves to any kind of lawsuits regarding that? Because how does that caseworker know that the E C H P's been carried out in the forward place? And at very minimum, I think we need to check, maybe change that policy to get caseworkers to, you know, review that annual review.
Caroline, I'll come in. I think what you're referring to is a caseworker's in-send, which, as Caroline's articulated, this is just about statutory complaints within social work and social care, so Martin, I don't know whether you wanted to just respond to that, but in relation to send.
Yeah, thanks, Jo. Thanks, Councillor Granton.
Thanks councillor Granton. I think on the send side of things, the complaints process is accommodated through a different number of avenues. So you've got mediation, and you've got the formal appeals process, and we also have the local complaints process as well. We, in the send arena, still have early resolution and mediation available, unlike in the social care space, the statutory complaint process. In terms of annual reviews, I mean, I think members will be really well aware of the national pressures on the send system and the local pressures on the send system. Although the council's expanded the send team by, I think in the last four years, probably 30 to 40 staff in terms of caseworkers, they're managing over 9,000 EHCPs, that's 9,000 EHCP reviews each year that need to be done, and you've got a caseload of 200, 250 cases. We are an outlier for annual reviews, so national average is about 25% of annual reviews require a change to an EHCP. For whatever reason, in Lincolnshire, we're running at about 84%. So that's 84% of 9,000 EHCPs that have to be rewritten each year by a workforce of around about 45 to 50 caseworkers. There are loads of successes within our send team. We're well above national averages in terms of 20-week timescales. We're running at 77% compared to a national of 42. They're working incredibly hard, but they are human. They've got caseloads of 250 EHCPs, maybe 50 of those at any one time need direct management. They work really hard, and we are working really hard to develop those communication processes and responses. But what I would say is, each part of the send process has its own dedicated timeline. For example, six weeks to decide to assess, 16 weeks to draft, 20 weeks to publish. And expectations in the system are hard to manage. People want something and they want it now, and that's not always something that we can deliver effectively in terms of expectations. But the team work incredibly hard, and we will continue to focus on improving performance within the resource that we've got.
Thank you very much. For myself, I have a daughter who's grown, well grown up now, and she's been through the sends, wasn't called that then, remedial system. And I can see such a great difference now in this whole system. So well done, everybody, because, you know, it's so much better now, so much better. Thank you, thank you. Are there any more questions, please? councillor Corey, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the excellent paper and the direction of travel. This is just a plea from someone who probably processes information in a particular way. I'm really grateful for the coloured graphics on page 214 and 215, showing the reasons for upheld complaints. And then below, in the narrative, we've got the absolute numbers for people like me who like pictures. I would really appreciate it if we could have the absolute numbers in graphic form as well, and then it will help me process that information. I don't know if anyone else would find that useful. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, percentages aren't always easy, are they? Numbers are better.
Pictures over sums, any day.
I will take that back, because I do agree, especially when it's low numbers, percentages sometimes skew it. I think there's a figure in there about over 1,000% increase, and you think, oh my goodness, that's massive. But actually, it's 26, as opposed to naught last year. So yeah, I will take that back and make sure we amend it for next year's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I nearly fell off my chair when I saw that. Okay. Any more questions, please? Okay, that concludes that suggested proposal. I propose that the committee has reviewed the report and has been assured of the performance of children's services in relation to the annual statutory complaints report 2024 to 2025, and that we receive the annual statutory complaints report for 25 to 26 in 12 months' time. Right. Can you please raise your hand if you agree? I think that's okay. Thank you. And you know, Miss, thank you very much. All agreed, and thank you again for all your reports. Item eight, children's and culture scrutiny committee work programme. This item is on pages 219 to 225 of the Agenda Pacts, and sets out the work programme of the children and culture scrutiny committee. Action required. One, to review and agree the committee's work programme as set out in this report. Two, to highlight for discussion any additional scrutiny activities which could be considered for inclusion in the work programme. This report will be presented by Tracy Johnson, our senior scrutiny officer. Over to you, Tracy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I have no amendments to the work programme to report. The committee's next meeting is on the 5th of December. We've got quite a big agenda for this meeting, so we will first have a couple of items from culture in relation to culture developments across Lincolnshire, and report on the Lincoln Museum development update. The committee will also be receiving the first performance reporting for this council term. This will cover quarters one and two, so this will be from April to September, and that will cover both culture and children's. The committee also have a number of pre-decisions reports listed, so they are on the children and young people's supported accommodation from April 27, the children in care transformation short stay assessment home, and also one in relation to Boston Hawthorn Tree Primary School Reboot Project. And I'm aware there's potentially one or two others that might be added on to that agenda as well. So at the moment, that's the current agenda for the December meeting, but happy to take any suggestions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on that report, please? councillor Corey, please.
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you, Tracy, for your presentation. I'm not sure that the balance of these meetings work. I think children's services is such an important area that this county council delivers, that I, having been on this committee now for five, six, nearly six months, I think that children's services really should have the whole of this, should be considered here. So I'm not for a second suggesting, Chairman, that the portfolios are rearranged, but I would suggest, and I'm opening this up for discussion to those people who have been on this committee and those who served on the previous council, when there was a different balance and when culture services was heard on a different committee, it had more time, it had more weight, and I think that children's services really needs the whole of this committee's time. I'm happy to discuss, I'm also happy to discuss this offline, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you want to come in there, Tracy?
Yes, thank you. I'll feed that back to the team and leave it to my manager to, whether he wants to take further discussions on that. But yeah, I'll definitely feedback your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. We're always open to suggestions, and that's good. We listen. Thank you very much. Are there any more questions, please? councillor Hearn, please.
It's not a question, I just want to second what councillor Corey said.
Okay, and as Tracy said, she will, we will look into this. Thank you. councillor Cleaver, please.
Yes, just looking through the items that are programmed, there doesn't seem anything relating to SEND provision in mainstream schools, which I find slightly surprising, given that it's quite a hot topic at the moment.
Thank you, Tracy. Did you, or Martin, did you want to take that?
I was just going to say, I know the, I'll see the government's due to publish the white paper on send soon, so that will probably, will come through the committee at some point once it's out, and obviously the office has had a chance to digest it, so that probably, we'll probably link it into something around that, into that paper, if that's all right. If Martin wants to add anything.
Yeah, I think it's sensible to talk about or table a paper once it's published, so we can understand what we're going to talk about and communicate. Just to check, though, as well, if it's about more information around the annual reporting of send and performance, there is a report that goes through to the Schools Forum each year, and that gives you more information if you're curious about volume of requests to assess. That is also being presented to the audit committee, I think. We're taking some reports. If it's a report you'd like to be shared or seen here, then we can follow that up, no problem.
Sorry, just one other minor question. Point, item three for the 23rd of January, says schools admissions policies and coordinated scheme. What's a coordinated scheme? Sorry for my ignorance.
Hi, the coordinated scheme just outlines how applications are going to be considered for all schools within the county. So it just says what your application deadlines are and how you lodge an appeal and things like that. So how are we going to process it, as opposed to the school's criteria?
Public and press be excluded from the meeting. Public and press be excluded from the meeting for agenda item 10, on the grounds that involves a likely disclosure of exempt information, as defined in paragraph three of part one of schedule 12A of the Act. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, councillor Cleaver. Thank you.
May I just speak to this?
Yes.
I think it's unfortunate that we need to go into private session to discuss the particular topic. I understand exactly, because of the way the paper is drafted, and has financial information on the way the paper is drafted, and has financial information on it, which is the main reason for the propose that we go into private session now. But I think with hindsight, it would have been good for us to have had an open discussion, an open paper, without the figures, without the financial figures in. Just wish to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you, I'll thank you, Matthew.
If it's okay, just to come back on that. I think, hi councillor Cleaver, thank you very much for your question. If there are proposals to expand schools in certain areas, then they go out to specific consultation anyway. So there's consultation with the public and the pupils at the school and the staff and everyone else to ensure that they are engaged in that process. So this is sort of a high-level paper to look at where across the council, and it's more about assurance of having sufficient funding to be able to carry those things forward, and then individual local consultation would take place as and when appropriate.
Thank you for that. It was a good point, no? Thank you. Okay, so do I have a second for that, please? Thank you. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Those against, we'll do the favour first. All those in favour, please. I think that's carried. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we will now pause briefly while the stream is switched off. Thank you. Just, we'll confirm later when we're ready.